All we will go ahead and get this meeting started. I'll call the meeting to order at seven o'clock and take attendance. Board Chair Stark. Anyone have an extra pen? Board Chair Stark is out. Board Member Conan. Board Member Duhan. Board Member Nicholson. Board Member Romack. Board Member Miller. Board Member Harris. Okay, and we have a quorum. First item on the agenda is public comments. The Park and Recreation Board welcomes comments from citizens early in the agenda of regular meetings. Speakers are provided with an opportunity to speak during this time period on any agenda item or any other matter concerning city business, and they must observe this three-minute limit. I do not have any public citizen comment forms. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, we have no public comments. Approval of the minutes from January 31st, 2022. A motion? You make a motion? Oh.
Well, make a motion to accept them. Okay, within section of three typos, I'm making a motion to accept them.
Which three typos?
On page one, next to last paragraph, it's decorations, just the type transition on the P-I-N-O on the end of the word, and it says at Mark, which is at Mary, as we know, Kyle Hartson City. And then on page two, the first paragraph, the word season. Somebody was just heavy on the typing.
We don't have, okay. And the third one?
That, well, that was it.
Okay.
The decorations, Mary instead of Mark and season.
Got it.
And then you want to make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes from January 31st, 2022 by Board Member Miller, and a second by Board Member Nicholson. All in favor?
Aye.
And it's my vote. Okay, first up on the agenda is our staff report. We have moved the agenda around a little bit since we have a joint meeting with council this evening. So I will very quickly go through the monthly report, if you want to take one and pass it down, since they were not attached in your packet. An update on Keep Kyle Beautiful. We had a great February, by the way. It was a really, it was a packed month. So, as y'all mentioned in the last meeting, we took the Keep Kyle Beautiful to City Council for their support and feedback, and we were advised to come back with a council resolution. However, there's a part in the Keep Kyle Beautiful resolution where we have to recognize the Keep Kyle Beautiful Committee. And we, in park board meetings, had just discussed, well, the park board will be the Keep Kyle Beautiful Committee. But we never really officially made that official. So at the March 22nd City Council meeting, we will bring the resolution back stating that the park board will be the Keep Kyle Beautiful Committee. So that's an update on that. The Wildflower Loop Bird Blind, there is one more workday remaining on the bird blind. The Eagle Scout project has been moving really smooth, smoothly. They just have left to put the roof back on. And so if you guys get a chance to go take a look at it, it's out in the Wildflower Loop, out by Button Park. It's really cool. An update on the Lake Kyle construction. They, the project manager has confirmed that the water is level, is lowered to the level it's going to be at. All of their larger fish have been relocated to surrounding areas. We do not know where they've been relocated, but they were sure they relocated. So they are moving full speed ahead, the projects, full force. And there's a huge, a huge, if you go see it, you'll see, but a huge spot where they've cut into the dam area and the dam repairs. So with that said, we're still looking at about a year out. For last I spoke with the project manager, the trails are blocked off, so you can come from Waterleaf Park to Lake Kyle Park, but there's signage saying that you'll have to turn around. For the most part, that's been working out pretty well. And other than that, Lake Kyle is going while the park is still open to the public. For those who want to go walk the park, use the playground, picnic, just no fishing right now. We are moving forward with the Juneteenth celebration. Our recreation manager, Amy Garcia, who's here in the back, will be meeting with Dr. Ruskbrook this week, and we'll be finalizing plans, and we'll get that information to you guys as soon as it becomes available. All of our market days, dates are updated online, and the application for market days is available online. As we mentioned, we're starting market days later this season so that we can do them also in partnership at Mary Kyle Hartson Park for October, November, and December. But they'll go back to Mary Kyle Hartson Park and back on Burleson Street. Our programs update, we have a brand-new sunrise yoga class that's been going on now for three weeks. It's really beautiful. Started my day with yoga this morning, even though it was like 36 degrees outside with the sun blaring down on us, it was awesome. It was awesome. So that's Mondays, free at 7:15 a.m. We started our first baton twirling class this afternoon. That was awesome, too. We just, I just came from class right now. We had about 10 students with parents and grandparents. It was really special. Those classes are free for ages four to 12. We have family skate night this Friday, and our spring break camp in a couple weeks is full. We are now recruiting for swim team members for the Kuhuta Swim Team. And our Plant, a Pot, Paint, a Flower event for next Saturday is full at 100 participants. And that will be held at Lake Kyle as well. July is Parks and Recreation Month. We will be working on the July's Parks and Recreation Month calendar event activities and bringing that to the park board next month. So we'll be reaching out to you guys, like we do each year, for ideas. We were thinking, I know Board Member Romack really wanted to have a chess tournament, so we're thinking about doing a chess tournament at Mary Kyle Hartson Park during the month of July, and some other activities. So if you guys have any ideas, start sending them our way. Greg Clark Park update, I know you guys have been asking about the skate park, what's going on with the skate park, what's going on with the splash pad, irrigation. We will be talking about irrigation here in a few moments. Right now, the RFPs for the skate park and splash pad are ready to go as soon as we're giving the go-ahead to get those out and publicize. And then the trails update, as y'all know, City Council approved a contract for engineering design with Schaumburg &amp; Polk to do the design engineering on the vibe. Staff has been taking Schaumburg &amp; Polk out on the trails. And then also, the Communications Department has, I think today or yesterday, recently launched a trail survey that's on our project webpage, so you all can go in in the public to go and give your input on the trails. So you guys have any questions on our month? Alrighty, we'll move on to consider and possible action. Discuss and consider possible recommendation regarding parkland dedication for Opal Ranch. And we have representatives from Opal Ranch here to request parkland dedication in lieu of the required park fees. If you guys want to come up, I can share.
Parkland project, it's a 68-unit community. A 68-unit community, 20 acres off of South Sledge Street. We are proposing parkland improvements in lieu of the parkland improvement portion of the fee. We plan on paying the fee in lieu for dedication because the size of the parcel and size of the parkland available does not exceed, or is not large enough to qualify under the code. Is there a way to go to the second page? So the parkland improvements that we're proposing are a 500-foot looped concrete trail that starts as an extension into the larger green space and natural pond area, a large pavilion structure, some park benches, park seating, and some grills. The location of the park pavilion structure is located out of the floodplain. The majority of this park and park space is adjacent to an adjacent floodplain. So the goal is to leave that natural and open, to do improvements of the, a large open space field in the center of the circle, or center of the looped trail, and then have the seating and pavilion space just off to the left. The next slide is our cost estimate for the fee and improvements. We're proposing a total of $236,000 in improvements. The parkland improvement fee that's required under the code is $51,000. So we're far exceeding the required amount to put these improvements in and are asking for a credit of the $51,000 based on the level of improvements we're proposing. The, right now, it would be street parking. There's approximately 150 feet of curbside parking along the parks and open space adjacent, directly adjacent to the park.
If we don't wait, the thing will, will look like?
The level of improvements would be, actually, Keegan, is there?
I think the level of improvements would probably be similar.
We had to come up because people are watching.
I believe the level of improvements would be similar to what you're seeing here, but I don't know 100%.
If there's any more comments or a motion?
I'd like it. I'd recommend we accept the proposal or recommend the proposal.
A motion? A motion?
Yes, that was a motion. I'm sorry.
Motion by Board Member Conan, and a second by Board Member Nicholson. All in favor?
Here.
Oh, here, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
And then it passes to Spatsis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda? Discuss and consider? Discuss and consider possible recommendation regarding a resolution in support of the partnership with the Hayes Food Bank for the post-out community garden. So, Board Members, this is actually really exciting because, as you know, the discussion of community gardens started from before I even got here. And then the last two years have been kind of rocky, with just everything going on, but we finally are in a position where we can move forward on constructing the community gardens. Stacy, who are our nature specialists behind me, has been working really, really hard on the community gardens. We had an intern two semesters ago who helped design this, what the garden could look like, and we brought that to park board. So we had a meeting with the Hayes County Food Bank last week, and they are still extremely excited in helping partner with the Parks Department and making this actually become a reality. Stacy's work with Public Works, with other city departments, to make sure that we know what we have to do to get this done. And so we are asking for the park board's support to ask City Council to present a resolution at the March 22nd, at the March 22nd City Council meeting. And that resolution would be in support of the partnership between the Hayes County Food Bank and the Parks Board. So we are just asking park board for your guys' support in that, and if so, someone would like to make a motion.
Are they offering financial support to get it started, or?
Not, they have not, they were not able to confirm any financial support. It'd be mostly volunteers, and then also helping with programming the gardens, and then as we move forward, any other way that they can. But they were not able to confirm financial support at this time.
I believe they were going to look for grants.
Yes. Yep, and they will be sharing any grant notices that they find. Stacy, am I missing anything? Things about to. But we would like to just kind of formalize the partnership through the form of a resolution.
I am going to consider the recommendation.
We have a motion by Duhan.
One second.
We have a motion by Board Member Duhan, and a second by Board Member Conan. All in favor?
Aye.
And the vote passes five to zero. Alright, and then our last Park and Recreation Board agenda item on the agenda is discuss and consider possible recommendation regarding the irrigation at Greg Clark Park. And as you all know, part of the park improvements is to put irrigation at the Greg Clark Park. Our park maintenance and trail supervisor, Benito, has been trying to secure quotes to make this possible. We have WLE here, who has been the only company thus far who's been able to provide us with a quote for the park. We have reached out to almost seven different companies. Our Assistant City Manager, who oversees Parks and Recreation, Jerry Hendricks, has also been in the discussion, and he's also virtual with us this evening. So our ask in the beginning was to irrigate the entire park. And then we kind of came back, we're like, okay, maybe that's not the best idea right now, because we're going to use half of the park for skate park, possibly, and another section of the park for splash pad, possibly. So right now, we just decided as staff and with our Assistant City Manager to focus on the ball fields, where the softball fields are and where the soccer fields are, and then I'll let Benito and WLE take it from here.
Yeah, I do. Good evening, I'm Blair Howell with WLE slash Brightview Landscapers as well, as we become one company in about a month. So basically, what we did is we were tasked to design an irrigation layout. We took what was already existing and dropped an overlay into it. I don't know if that's going to be coming up here shortly.
Yes.
And throughout meetings, we discussed what else was going to be going in the park. So through that process, we took out everything on the east side of the park, and we just, like she said, focus, we're just going to focus on the ball fields, the four softball fields, and the soccer complex, the parking area right next to it as well. The city would like to take this to reclaimed water as well, so there are a few variables that go along with that, that you might not see a whole, you won't see a whole lot of detail here. But what you're looking at here is a new irrigation map. Every little dot you see is a head. The reason that these things are so far, and I don't know, I'm pretty sure you don't have the irrigation layout, but the way, the way we're going to irrigate this is because these heads are so big, and we're spraying 40 and 50 feet, you're going to see a lot of heads over there. These heads don't actually match up. The head itself that pops up is not watering the grass underneath it. Okay, the head that pops up is watering grass 30 and 40 feet away, so we have head-to-head coverage, which is why you see so many of these things, a lot more than you would see on a normal application. Any of the blue that you see up top in the corner by the softball field is actually going to be drip irrigation. That's why you don't see any heads there as well. With retaking it to reclaimed, we do have an option, depending on what local jurisdictions say, as far as reusing some of the irrigation that's on the soccer field currently. Okay, generally, most jurisdictions allow us to come back and reuse all the pipe. We would just have to replace some valves in the heads to accommodate for the water flow. So what we priced is coming in and redoing everything currently as it is, repiping everything. Those savings, any savings that we can find with reusing, obviously will then be a deduct or a give-back as the process goes through. So in doing this work, as y'all know, we're going to be running all kinds of equipment over this, trenching everywhere, so we're pretty much going to destroy the park. So with this comes a new soil amendment that you see on there. That's the most expensive line item down. You'll see there, soil depth two inch until the four inch. Because of the type of soils out there, and we're going to work with Benito as well, we're going to take some soil samples, but because of what we've seen out there, the type of soil, similar to farmland soil, it's just been tilled and tilled and tilled and tilled and tilled, it grows grass, right, but not very well. And we're going to tear that up. So what we have in here, and of course, all these can change as we move through, is to come back and put a soil amendment in there to enrich the soil, to make sure that this, these fields are going to be good for another 20, 30, 40 years down the line. And then we come back in and hydromulch on top of everything there. Total project length is about 110 days from the day we start. The irrigation portion is 63 business days, working days, right Monday through Friday, 63 days, and then from there, it's 35 to 40 days for re-vedge growing until you guys can get back on it and start to use.
And so the goal of this evening's presentation is to get park board's feedback, answer any questions, concerns you may have, and then staff will work from going from there. But we do not need any motions, it's just more of a feedback, an opportunity for you guys to see what is proposed and what could possibly take place.
When are we looking at doing this?
We are looking to do it possibly this summer. Once it goes to park board, we'll take it further to council.
Yeah, and we can work, I mean, we know the parks can be used, right? The idea of the park is to get it back in so we can get some more activities on it and things of that nature. So we're happy to work around y'all's schedule, obviously.
And we also had a meeting with Lone Star Soccer, who's the number-one user. I'm out there, and Mr. Finch, they're all on the same page. We did tell him, as soon as we found out further, we will let him know, and we will be moving him to a different park once we do know what the dates are.
And for our, just, and just so y'all know, our grasses that we grow in, the only caveat we would have is, obviously, we don't want to, we're going to come back with Bermuda seed on the hydromulch. We can throw some ryegrass in there if it's the winter time, so we can get some greening up, but we'd rather, we want to, we want to spray that seed when the temperatures are going to consist, a soil temperature is going to stay about 54 degrees or higher. So avoiding November through now to spray the seed. We can start growing it before that and get it growing in, you know, three or four weeks ahead of time, but that's really where we want to stop spraying seed is about November.
Do we have temporary fields for softball and for soccer to move people to?
Yes, so we've been working on ball field improvements, and speaking with our recreation manager, who's in the back corner, and then also with Lone Star Soccer, we can move them to idle steeple trees or water leaf.
What about kickball, summer kickball?
We probably would have to not have the summer kickball season. We talked about doing at the other fields, but we're just not sure if we're going to be ready yet. Any other questions or feedback? Yes, Mr. Sellers.
Scott Sellers, I'm the city manager here. Just one thing is, we do not have reclaimed to this site yet, so for a time, this will be purple pipe being fed by potable sources. So I anticipate, hopefully, in the next year to year and a half, that purple pipe will be extended here through the LA Branch project, at which point we'll have our design ready to go and be able to serve it through.
And that's the point to use it. If you, if we move on this, the point would be to make sure everything's in place, that we reuse pipe, we, you know, in the heads that we put in and saw now, or in valves that we saw now are going to be able to be transitioned to that reclaimed water source as well. Yeah, no reason in doing this twice.
Any other feedback?
My only question was already answered, because I noticed only one quote, but if nobody else will quote, I guess you have one quote.
And Benito would be able to provide that list, just showing who he's reached out to. It's, that's kind of what it took us quite some time, you know. Jerry's like, what's going on with the irrigation? Like, Jerry, we can't get no one to bid up to give us a quote. And it took a lot of work between the two of them, so.
We didn't ask about parking again.
We're seeing that.
I'm sorry.
Alrighty, then if there's no other feedback, we will continue to work, and we'll be in contact as far as moving forward with direction.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as far as Park and Recreation Board agenda items, that is it. I will now turn it over to Council and Park and Recreation Board, Joint Meeting Item Regarding Roles, Goals, and Vision for 2022, Mayor Travis Mitchell.
Alright, I'm going to, good evening, everyone. We have to call a special meeting. The time is 7:28 p.m. It is Monday, February 28th, and I'm going to call this special City Council meeting to order with the City Secretary, Police Colonel.
Mitchell.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Ellison.
Present.
Flores Cale. Bradshaw. Parsley. Tobias.
Here.
Okay, four members present. We have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak, to speak on any items, please do so. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward? Seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. It is now closed. Next up, consider and possible action, Council and Parks and Recreation Board, Joint Meeting Item Regarding Roles, Goals, and Vision for 2022. So I guess we're together. I don't know, I think probably Mariana, are you starting?
So we do have a list of items that the City Council discussed during their vision and retreat, and so I'll bring those up. If there's any items that City Council members want to discuss or bring up, or any that park board members want to bring up, we can do that as well. I apologize, I wasn't quite sure how this would run, so let me just pull that up really quick. And I guess we can just go through the discussion items here. So the first discussion items that City Council had brought up was a discussion regarding the vibe. So I'm not sure if City Council members wanted to touch on anything specific, but the list that was spoken about were different photo ops, fitness equipment, having a sculpture, possible splash pad playgrounds, sports court, climbing walls, misters, directional signage, and ways that we can promote nature. So if you guys want to have a discussion on that at all, if not, then I can go to the next discussion item.
Yeah, I guess I can go ahead and add with the splash pad. It would also be to where we can look at, this would also hit when we're getting to the Atkins Pool discussion. They're trying to look at different ways where we can upgrade some of our splash pads, and maybe we can, one idea was also to maybe add some on the vibe trail or something like that. And as far as the signage goes, I know we didn't really talk too much about it, but I do agree that if we had some layout as far as when people are on the trails, they know the diameter of how many miles they're walking on, if they're specific. they know the diameter of how many miles they're walking on, uh, if there's specific areas of the trail that might have, um, some areas for, uh, bird sightseeing, is the way I look at it, or any kind of wildflowers that are on the way. It could be something we can look at on that end. Um, that's for the vibe trail. And then we can continue on, Mariana, if there's other subjects, we can go on.
Just, if we're still on, is that just the vibe trail?
Yes, this discusses regarding the vibe.
So just art pieces as well, any art pieces we could put along the trail to maybe bring back some history of Kyle would be great. Um, and, uh, just make it fun, I think that's the biggest key. Make it fun, make it educational, make it also, uh, now, uh, easy to navigate, because I think that's key. We don't wanna be getting lost out there. Uh, I don't know how many times I've got a phone call where people in San Marcos on their trail system have gotten lost, and people have had to go out there and rescue them. I don't want that happening here, please.
And, and one more item on the vibe trail, which was discussed about, uh, safety as well, um, would be the options for possibly having lighting out there, including, uh, an emergency, uh, phone box in case we need that. So just little things like that, we're just brainstorming as we're talking about the vibe.
Yeah, um, so I'm gonna kinda jump around a few different places, so this isn't just the vibe, this is just trails in general, I think. Um, one of the bullet points are directional signage. Um, I was, I've been out on our trail quite a bit. Um, I absolutely love it. One of the things, there are some little things that I would like to see a little bit more, uh, certainly more signage. I was thinking personally, every quarter mile, that there should, uh, should be something letting you know. One of the things I've gotten feedbacks from when I talk to people on the trail when I'm out there, is sometimes you can kinda go a little bit away. I think there's only mile markers currently. Uh, and so you can kind of go, and you can figure it out, you know, staying along the watershed, of course, uh, but I think when I've talked to people that have been on the trail, just kind of a little concerned of if they're still on the trail, they haven't seen a sign or anything like that, so, um, I was thinking maybe every quarter mile, some kind of signage, just to kinda show, hey, you're still on the trail, you know, you're moving in the right way. Um, certainly, I, I love the aspect of the city app incorporating, uh, some amount of technology into our trails as well. Uh, one of the things when we did go and, um, to Peachtree City, uh, we immediately tried to get on an app that they had, and, in order to, you know, navigate the trail, and we've quickly found out that that app wasn't that strong. And so that was something that we immediately said, you know, when we put our, our, uh, trail system together, whether that'd be improved trails or not, uh, to make sure that, uh, it's highly functional with our app and, and accurate. The other thing, kinda just staying on technology, y'all have probably heard with the city council that we're trying to incorporate Wi-Fi into all of our parks. We have it at, uh, the downtown park down here, I believe at Lake Kyle as well, uh, Greg Clark Park.
It's getting installed.
Getting installed. So I wanted to get, um, certainly not dictating or directing anything, but you all's feedback on that, and what you all would think about, uh, extending that to the trail system as well, uh, because it kinda goes to the point made by one of my colleagues earlier, uh, with a phone, but, um, I think just having that access, so you know, if you, certainly for my T-Mobile users, uh, here in Kyle, uh, we know, uh, it's a little spotty sometimes, so certainly having that access to Wi-Fi to be able to connect to GPS or make a phone call and different things like that, um, I feel is, is important as well for safety. Certainly concur with my colleagues about having things along the trail, whether that's art sculptures, fitness equipment, um, various different playground equipment, uh, I think is important. Certainly, I think misters is a, is a, a great idea for here in central Texas. I'm just gonna kinda jump into all trails here, or all kind of things as well. One of the, the, and I know Stacy has been working really hard on the wildflower loop, uh, I'd really love to see us invest in that, whether that's resources, funding, uh, person power, getting volunteers. I would love that to be just a major attraction, um, for, uh, pictures and just, you know, people taking the loop and different things like that. I know when I've gone out there, when it's been really nice and seen those big wildflowers, it is absolutely stunning, so I'd like to do, see what, what you all might recommend to the council, uh, on how we can really bolster, uh, that area. Certainly, I, I'd like, uh, you know, I've seen the, the frog signage, I think at Cool Springs, and, uh, the butterfly signage and different things like that. One of the things I really enjoy when I go to parks, uh, San Antonio's really good about this, is having the educational pieces. And what I love about it, too, is they're not very wordy. There's, there's one thing to have signs with a lot of words, nobody's gonna read those, right? But when you have pictures or maps or different things like that, uh, that is, that will stop people, and they will pay attention to that. They don't have to, uh, digest a lot about, a lot of reading, it's just pictures, kinda figuring out where things go, and so I'd really, I've, I've taken some pictures over the years, too. I'd be happy to forward to staff of just some examples of signage that I have found appealing when I'm out hiking, uh, as well. I, I would, you all have kind of heard, or maybe you have, maybe not, um, I'm a big fan of making sure, and certainly when we did our survey, uh, this was the highest response as well, uh, a variety of surfaces for our trails. And the one thing I think we've learned, and even the interesting little conversation between Mr. Miller and Mr. Rizzo the other night in our council meeting, everybody has different appeals to the trail. Some people do want improved surfaces, some people don't, uh, and everything else in between. And so I'd like to us to do everything we can to try and accommodate all those different varieties of trails. I'm personally a fan of the nature trail over the improved surface, but I am very aware that those, uh, there are those that, uh, prefer the improved surfaces, so I wanna be accommodating to all, and I think the vibe and the nature trails that we're doing kind of, uh, promotes that, but I like us to really focus, uh, and continue to promote that as well. Uh, I've kinda, uh, dominated some time here, so I'm just gonna stop on those, but really appreciate you all.
One of the other bullet points under the vibe were photo ops. Did any council members wanna expand on photo ops along the vibe?
I guess for me, it's, um, the art pieces, um, maybe really focusing on areas, cleaning up areas where you see something along the creek that you think is unique, uh, giving people that love nature, even photography, areas to go in, so we're expanding on what's gonna make people wanna come to our trail system, it's the trails, obviously, but, you know, we're, we're still in a part of the hill country, we have a lot of nature, so what do we do to draw that nature in there, to give us those, those awesome pictures? You know, what do we do to bring in deer, to bring in, uh, birds, to bring in the buff, migrating butterflies, stuff like that? So what are we doing to really encompass the entire trail system that will be able to have those photo, photographic opportunities? And I think it's, uh, looking for certain areas on the, on the trail that are really gonna resonate with people, so, and then all the other stuff.
Yeah, 'cause you, you wanna be able to, we want people to be able to have a spot that they can say, hey, this is where we're gonna take our, our yearly bluebonnet photos, right? Or yearly photos for the family. Uh, I think that'd be pretty neat to where, you know, we could look into things like that, to where specific areas on the trail that families can go to and be able to have that, 'cause you see it, well, sometimes, a lot of times on social media, it's like, hey, where can we take our photos for our family, you know? Some people say, well, on the side of the highway, there's a lot of bluebonnet, bluebonnet patches there. But, uh, again, with the, my other colleagues here emphasizing bringing that nature out and, and having certain areas where people can take those photographs, or just, you know, enjoy nature, just getting people out.
Yeah, so one thing that, um, that I see as far as photos and things, um, I like natural things. Obviously, I like natural things. Uh, the places, I've, I've lived in Colorado, New Mexico, and you had these big vistas, right? We don't have that in Kyle, and that's okay, but what we do have is some awesome old trees. Along, uh, Water Leaf Park, there's some amazing willow trees out there, biggest willow trees I've seen anywhere, and those are cool. I mean, it doesn't matter what time of year you're, you're there, those are cool places to take photos. Uh, there's some really big oak trees, right there in between Idea School and, um, and Plum Creek, those are some of the biggest cypress trees I've ever seen. When I cut that little small piece of trail, that's why I cut that small piece of trail, because of cypress trees. I'm from Louisiana, and I've never seen cypress trees that big, so, you know, we don't have to build necessarily something always to have a great photo op. We do have some great, great things for sure, so I like those natural big pieces of wood that we have around, around Kyle. If we have big overlooks, that would be awesome, but we don't, right? We're in a flat spot, but we have some great, great trees, so, um, like to incorporate those if we're talking about photo ops and something for, uh, you know, get people together for pictures and things.
Absolutely.
Oh, go ahead, go.
I was just gonna say, I absolutely love that, 'cause one of the things I love doing when I'm on, on the trail is stopping when I've found a great place where the sunlight is coming through the trees, hitting off different things, and it's so serene and calm and peaceful. And yeah, maybe something it's where, you know, maybe incorporated in the app where it's like, this is a, a sweet spot, or whatever, we, you know.
Call it a vibe spot.
Right, right, yeah, or something, you know, just kinda saying, this is a picture spot, be on the lookout for, you know, some good nature scenery, you know, and different things like that.
I need a, there's a, there's a really great, a really great, um, willow tree that kinda comes out across the trail in the middle of Water Leaf Park, it's kinda forty-five degrees. I don't know if y'all thought about that, but please do something to prevent that tree from going down.
We're taking it down, actually, this week.
You're taking it down?
Well, cleaning it up so it won't fall down.
Okay, yeah, I would, um, yes.
Brace it, we're gonna brace it so it won't fall. Yeah, we're gonna brace it.
I love what, I like, I like what you said about, that's what I was referring to, was clean up, so, so when you have those beautiful trees, sometimes you, you have trees that are not native to Texas, are now growing near it, clean those trees out, away from those cypress trees. The cypress are my favorite trees, so definitely.
It keeps the, it keeps the rattlesnakes away when you clean up the bottom of it, too, so. Um, down in South Austin, there's a couple of, uh, places that, that they had trees like that, and they, they took big, um, cedar trees, and they used them to hold them up, and it looks natural, so, yeah. Don't let that tree fall.
And, uh, try, try Cool Springs, uh, they have some nicer trees there, too.
Yeah.
I have a suggestion, too, that you could find some old pieces of farm equipment like tractors or, uh, buckboards, something that's really, um, early nineteen hundreds or whatever. So many farms are, they keep them, I mean, they don't ever destroy that stuff, it's on the farm, and these farms are being bought, like the new Samson plant going in west of Taylor, that's farmland right there that they're displacing, so, I mean, there's people that have that stuff. I mean, I have a first cousin in Hutto who has stuff, you know, because they don't ever, they just leave it in a barn and then build a newer, better barn, you know?
Well, even taking off that, we could name parts of the trail, sorry.
That's a good idea.
Um, parts of the trail after farms, local farms or farms, um, historically. Oh, thank you. Um, we do also, I think, need to be aware, I love, I love photo ops, I love all of that, however, I think we need to be, be aware of that ecosystem, we don't want people trampling over, we don't wanna, you know, plant all these wonderful wildflowers and then have people trample all over them, so I think that there needs to be some balance, but I think that having it in the app that, hey, here's where you need to go, will help encourage people to do it the right way.
Great, okay, so as we know, we have a fitness park coming in at the new Barton Park, which is right there off Burleson and Thirty-Five, and one of the other items on the joint meeting discussion list was fitness equipment, sports parks, climbing walls. Did there wanna be any more discussion on that, or is that kinda just things that we wanna consider as we move along the trail system? Any climbing walls? That was the first I kinda heard of climbing walls, I didn't know if anyone wanted to expand on that one. Okay, all righty. The next item that we thought would be great for discussion is the whole Greg Clark Park, um, Greg Clark Park improvements. And so some of the things that city council spoke about at their visioning retreat included ceiling fans at the pool, turf in the back side of the pool, repairing the slide at the pool, and then a mural of the city on the inside brick, such as a train depot, water tower, cityscape, or downtown, which we're really excited about, because one of our park maintenance technicians, that's also graphic designer, Rachel Sabeto, she just came up with one, two, three, five different murals that could possibly go at that pool that we're gonna start sending out to you guys, so you can see them put on the next park board agenda.
I, I would also encourage you to think further back, so, uh, Stagecoach Road used to be our stage line before Kyle was even a town, that's where people would come in from San Marcos and navigate that. Uh, we actually just found, uh, the original well that was used during that Stagecoach line on Stagecoach Road, uh, where the stagecoach would come in and water, and so traveling soldiers as well during that era, so, uh, just not think about, just not just think about when Kyle was incorporated just before as well, before it was just a city.
So if anyone wants to expand, um, I would definitely share, like I said, Amy's here, but about the ceiling fans at the pool, we can work at obtaining quotes for those, uh, possibly as a budget request for next fiscal year. Um, same thing with turf in the back. We've already obtained several quotes for repairing the slide, um, as you know, last year, we used that money to do the replaster of the pool. So next would be replacing the slides, and even in the aquatics industry right now, slides are not always the most popular, a lot of municipalities are getting climbing walls where kids can drop off, so there's a bunch of other play features that we could put in place of a slide, and then the mural.
If I could expand on that, um, adding the ceiling fans was, was, was a big plus, and also possibly upgrading some of the, looking at the splash pads or making it more modern, or, you know, 'cause I know right now they have the one where you just press the button and the water comes out, uh, using, maybe finding another way, another type of, um, feature that we could use. Uh, also, another idea was to maybe spruce it up a little bit out there, you know, can bring in up the, the mural, and then maybe, uh, repainting some of the brick to make it more vibrant with more colors, or something like that. Uh, another idea that, um, which I go there quite often, we have parties out there, is the, there is a snack bar that is there, that is like a long concrete kind of bar, but it's never utilized very much at all. I don't, you know, I thought at one time that it was gonna actually be concessions, which I think it still could be a good idea to do that, uh, whether it's city-run or allowing nonprofits or, uh, school, um, BTAs or band, or anybody of, of the schools that would like to maybe utilize that for fundraising area, or just use it like that and just have a spot where, when you're at the pool, people could be able to buy refreshments if needed. And, uh, maybe this could be also something to where you can work with your lifeguards as well, and staff, pool staff, to see if there's any improvements that they think they might need or policies.
Council member Tobias is pretty precise on that, I think, in the two year, over two years I've been here, just, we use it to serve the black-eyed peas on the Polar Bear Splash, and then just pretty much for rentals, so it's definitely, Amy, something that we can consider in our aquatic programming. Are there any other pool improvements that you wanna go over, or did we pretty much cover it?
Well, there's a lot of minor things that are gonna be going on with the pool, like leveling, uh, could you find the guys that already leveled out some of the stones that were out there also? Um, sorry. Um, a lot of the, um, construction that's already been going on, they're kinda minor, minor that most people won't see, but I'm sure that if you guys take a walk out there, you definitely, I know we have a walk-through on Thursday, uh, they've been leveling some of the stones that are out there, cleaning up some of the, um, power washing it off. Uh, we're messing with the blue awnings, and we're waiting to solidify the color for the mural to match the color with the paint that we're gonna paint the bricks, so we have, um, ideas in motion with those things, we're just pending some of the things that were going on, but there's a lot of things coming up for that pool.
Thank you. Any other discussion regarding the James Atkins Pool?
But I've got some things for the park itself there, so when you're ready for that.
Yes. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item discussion item, is the sportsplex. Is there any questions that park board members had regarding the sportsplex, or anything that council members wanted to say?
I, I've got more Greg Clark Parks.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, we'll go back to Greg Clark Park, just kidding.
Yeah, definitely, so, yeah, definitely. Um, so some of the things I wanna see improved in the park is, uh, I love discussion about the pipe earlier, um, I'm gonna, I'm really encouraging you to do all the purple pipe. If we're gonna do purple pipe in that park, it needs to be all purple pipe. If we have purple pipe that's white, uh, people later on will know that that's purple pipe, and maybe tie in some freshwater to that, and that would be a, just, a consternation for me, so that'd be great, it would be great. Uh, but the other thing I'd love to see is the, uh, basketball goes wrapped with some fencing, so that's one of the things I wanna see done, and the reason why is that I see young men chasing basketballs across the street, down that hill, and all over the park, so it's, it's been kinda something that has, uh, I've been wanting to see done for a while. Uh, I wanna see. Uh, I want to see more trees at the park because this is Texas and we've got no shade. When somebody's running on that field at a hundred and something degrees and they need to cool down somewhere, there's nothing out there. Every once in a while a tent or something like that, but I'll see some trees around there. And the other thing is a park. I mean, how do you build a park without trees? So definitely need some trees out there. Um, and really the, uh, other thing I like to see is the, uh, I don't know if it's out there right now, but I had a complaint from a resident saying that they don't know how, how, where they're at in the, um, mileage when they're getting there. They know the, the, it's a certain mile, but they want to know where the half mile is, things like that. So it's kind of what they were asking for, so they know how far down they are. Um, and I think pretty much is looking at ways to extend parking a little bit because right now we've got people parking all over the grass and all over the field. So finding a way to find some new parking areas as well. That's pretty much it.
And so as part of our overall Greg Clark Park improvement plan, we do have some parking improvements as well.
If I could add a little bit more, uh, thank you for bringing that up, Mayor Protem, about the basketball. Um, that was one of the things that, well, I, I kind of was looking at is improvements to the basketball court itself. I've, it's been a while since I've been out there, but I, I know that, I'm not sure if the court, how it looks, if it needs to be resurfaced or anything, or if the goals need to be upgraded. Um, there is, there is that. Um, how many water fountains are out there as well? There's only two.
Near the basketball court?
Near the basketball court and at the park itself by like the playground area.
I don't know.
Not very many.
Two at the basketball and then there's two at the park and then one at the smaller park by Field Five.
Okay.
And then also another one at the Ash Pavilion.
Okay, so you have some there. Okay, that, that was one of the other things was possibly at, looking at adding additional water fountains, even if it's maybe on the trail or something like that, when you go around the other side. That way people can stay hydrated and so forth and that end. And if we're working on looking at improving the field itself, you know, by adding all the, um, the irrigation, uh, one, one idea I had was just adding turf to the infield grass if it need be to work and make it more inviting. And then, um, that's for the infield of, of the baseball fields, the softball fields. Didn't know how much maintenance that would cost versus using the water and everything else. But if it's just not knowing that you guys are already gonna get started in irrigation project, but just making it more inviting in a sense to where it's more, more of a modern looking field with a backstop and all that.
Well, with the fields at, uh, Greg Clark, they're softball fields, so there's no grass on the infield, it's only on the outfield. So you mean the outfield turf in it or?
I was just kind of like looking at it like I was watching the baseball game the other day, uh, the text, the, you know, softball game. They had those fields out there looking like that, but if we're working on getting a natural grass, then, you know, we can look at different options, I guess. These, these are just ideas, brainstorming ideas as well.
And we did, uh, paint the basketball court about a year and a half ago, got all new backstops and baskets and relined it. Um, and then just been working on securing the fencing quotes, which came out a lot more than we thought. Like, oh yeah, we can do the fencing like that. But it wasn't quite that way. So we are working on it still.
I, I was gonna, one comment or question that I wanted us to dive a little bit further on, but I will say, uh, we have talked about the fencing around the basketball court before. I completely concur with that. Uh, I'm certainly one of those young men chasing their basketball down that road. I would like to see any of our, particularly talking about basketball, whenever we do maintain and replace the goals, I would like us to have personally the Gorilla Glass backboards. I know they're more expensive and whatnot, but they are better. Um, uh, they would last longer as well. Um, but I did want to talk a little bit about the shade conversation because this is something I've had conversations with residents about at Lake Kyle as well and different things. And of course, I think that we would all prefer to have shade through trees. However, the challenge with that is, is you're not gonna plant fully grown trees to get that shade. You're gonna plant, uh, brand new trees and it's gonna take years for that to go. So I guess I would like to have a little bit further discussion about, you know, what we could do. I certainly, you know, adding trees, I know we have in our contract with TDS to get trees. I know we've added some at Lake Kyle and different things like that. But more of a, uh, sooner, uh, impact on, on shade. Cause once again, like I said, I think trees are the, the best way, but we're not gonna get that anytime soon by planting trees now. What are some of the thoughts and ideas, particularly looking at the parks board, of what you all think we could do in the meantime, uh, as far as shading goes?
Well, it's, it's funny you said that because, uh, I got direction from Jerry to get shade structures out there in Lake Kyle. Uh, where all the picnic tables at, we're gonna concrete the surface on the bottom and kind of mimic the way Greg Clark is. And just add more because like you said, there's, there's no shade out there, especially for the guys fishing. I mean, there are a lot of tree shade, but not enough of like canopy shade for, you know, walk byers and stuff like that. Yeah, I like that idea. One reason is that it's, uh, sometimes it's just a table with shade over it, doesn't even need chairs because it's just where you're putting your gear together, stuff like that. It gives you a place to put your water bottle, uh, keep it out of the sun. But along the park, I think that's a great idea against Marleson. I'd love to see some benches maybe with some small canopies, uh, over them. Small canopies aren't gonna, you know, get in the way of anything and just benches for the spectators. Because usually everybody's spectating from their car. It's hot and they're watching everybody play soccer up there. So, or practicing Pee Wee football, but to see some benches out there for the parents and a little, you know, uh, shade structure over it would probably be pretty good. I think that'd be, uh, something that everybody would appreciate.
I think the hike and bike trail in Ocarina Springs, if you go up the hill, I think it's like a mile two on top of the hill there. I think the Boy Scouts had built a, um, canopy out of log, wood logs and so forth. And it had a bench there. It's like a rest area. So I guess we're looking at something like that, like rest areas or just shade that maybe has more natural woody versus metal or something like that?
Yeah, exactly. So I, I helped, uh, one of the Cubs, uh, what do you call it? Eagle Scouts work on a project like that up there on that trail. And, uh, they're very simple to construct and quick, they go up quick. I mean, we, we knocked it out really fast, so pretty easy.
So we will be sure to include that in our budget requests.
You know.
Council members, uh, Jerry Hendricks, City Manager for the record. And in our walkthroughs with the parks and the trails, we're specifically identifying places for, for shade structures, realizing that, that it does get really, really hot, including the basketball courts, picnic tables, and oversizing those shade structures because we know that unless the sun's directly overhead right now, you're not in the shade anyway. So we've talked about all those things for dugouts, bleachers, picnic tables, basketball courts, tennis courts. We're, we're developing a plan to actually have shade structures over everything.
Thank you, Jerry.
And, you know, I think one of the things, the lolly furniture in the Central Park is particularly made to resist that and things like that. So as I guess we add equipment and different things, I know we have the metal benches. I don't know if maybe there, there's some other kind of metal they're kind of made of, but the black benches that we've had along the trail and different things like that. So for me, I would be a fan of us looking at, um, structures that are resistant to those things. Even if it costs a little bit more, I'm, I'm a fan of maybe doing that, going that route as opposed to maybe cutting costs, you know, to get that, that furniture out there, but really isn't, uh, made for longevity and practicality in our weather.
Well, I know if it's wood, you can, uh, paint an anti, uh, reflective paint that, uh, Sherman Williams makes a reflective paint that is, um, so that it's not as hot. Barefooted like for decks, but I don't know about composite. So I don't know. It depends what it's made out of. I was just speaking towards it being made of wood.
So some of the new composites are now heat resistant, so they don't absorb heat. So there are some.
The composites are where you can walk on them barefoot?
You can walk on them. So you can put a whole deck of that composite now and walk on it barefoot in the middle of summer. So.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely. There's some new composites out there. So, sorry, my construction background's coming out. Sorry.
Awesome. Thank you.
I have a, so we were talking, uh, numbers, a few different like costs and obviously your presentation from WLE slash Brightview. Companies merge and then no one else wants to bid. Kind of strange. Um, but what, what is your familiarity with the budget for Greg Clark Park? As far as the, uh, you know, the, in, in your mind, like the amount of proceeds that you have to be working with and responsibility for that?
Actually, Mayor, the park board doesn't get a monthly budget report, which is probably something we start adding in. So they're probably not, they're probably not very aware with what the budget for the park is.
So what about, were y'all on the, who, who was on the board when the Proposition B in twenty twenty passed for ten million dollars for parks and trails?
Board member Conan and Duhan.
And then.
And then Amanda Stark.
Yeah. So the, the basic breakdown of the way that, that all happened was it was in concert with Hayes County. And there were conversations that took place then. They passed a parks bond as well, but it's taken since then sort of two years to get to the point where sort of the way that we were setting it up initially is now being mirrored by the county. And so, uh, we're, uh, pretty, pretty close to finalizing, Scott. I don't know exactly where we are, but we are at the one yard line of closing that deal with the county. And what it will allow for is two mil, two million dollars worth of, uh, bond proceeds. One million from the city and one million from the county to go towards Greg Clark Park. Uh, and the way that it was structured in the bond was for, uh, basically, uh, park improvements. So that's what the folks voted on, uh, up to and including a skate park. So the skate park was ki, kind of the idea that we were looking at with the park, but also necess, not necessarily recognizing that we wanted all two million dollars to, to go towards that. So my question is, I know we were talking about the, uh, the upgrading some of the, the sod and I was just trying to figure out, I guess you're assuming Parkland Development Fund for that project or were you thinking?
Right. The list that we've kind of been discussing would all be budget requests that would come out of Parkland dedication for the next fiscal year.
Okay.
And our focus for the bond money was on the irrigation, skate park and splash pad.
Out of what? Say it again.
Yes. So the bond money would be skate park, splash pad and irrigation. And then our budget request would be like all the bleachers, players benches, signage, all the other items that we discussed would be budget request for next year.
Okay.
Our thinking right now.
So are y'all looking for us to prioritize your, you know, all the ones that we have? Because we're gonna have to take a look and determine what we can afford and what we can't and what phase it needs to go into. Is that what you're looking at us for?
That's a great question. I'm, I'm not exactly sure.
So usually when we go through the budget process and we tried to start this the last year, um, was we bring all of our bucket recommendations to the park board. Like when we got the floor scrubber for the Ash Pavilion, we really needed that. When we got the vent track attachments that we really needed for parks and trails and we got the brand new backhoe. We bring it to the park board and we kind of explain to you guys why we need them, what our justification is. So that way we can get park board support for when we present our budget request to city council. We have the backing of the park board. And so same thing with this year, all these discussion items. We pretty much already working on half the quotes like Jerry mentioned and Anita both mentioned. But we'll bring them to park board and we will prioritize them. So when we go to city council with our budget requests, they'll know what our priorities are, but ultimately they'll make, you know, they approve them or, you know, like they'll decide what gets approved.
Just with me, with the things that I have brought forward were actual personal conversations I've had with residents. And it, it always comes back to the swimming pool because that was, you know, it had been shut down because of COVID. And then we had the storm. And so it was just like for two years now, there's been a lot of families that haven't been able to really, really enjoy that, that, that amenity. So when I'm talking with people and I'm saying, hey, look, you know, this is what we're talking about for the new year. What are some of your ideas that you like to see when it comes to our parks? It's always coming back to the swimming pool, for me that is. And for maybe the other colleagues, it's other things, but that's where I'm getting a lot of my, my feedback from. And a lot of the priorities that I'm, that I'm looking at on that end.
I, I think that Greg Clark Park is really what I consider our city park because we have so many activities there and we're expanding there with the skate park as well. So even though I don't think all parks are created equal, I don't think it's gonna be that way. The, the vibe will be a different place. Uh, I do would love to see a community center with an indoor pool on the east side of thirty five, you know, um, and we're growing and expanding. Maybe one day that will happen. Uh, but in the meanwhile, I think that a lot of money, um, going to Greg Clark Park with the programs that are there pay for itself almost because there's so much that, that park is used for. That when the person was talking about the sod replacement and the turfing, I was thinking, oh my God, everything's gonna be, how's Mariana gonna do it? But she always manages, so I'm sure she'll do it, you know, as far as keeping those programs going. And we have the Ash Pavilion there now too.
My question would be to the city council, what would make us more useful to you? I mean, we concentrate on parks. If you want us to come up with a six page wishlist of, boy, this would be cool to do. I'll bet you we could do it, but there's only so much money.
Let me tell you what my fear is. So there.
A six page wishlist?
No, it, it, it's not that. Uh, the, the, there are some things about Greg Clark Park that aren't that great and that you can trace the origin of those poor decisions back to, uh, the sort of some, some of the capital improvement projects that took place. So for example, I don't know, have any, has anybody been on the tennis court before?
Oh, well, it's terrible tennis court, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's, it's, it was designed wrong. It's, it has a, it's not built to the right size. You, uh, you cannot play tennis on it at all. No one, no one of a regular tennis match can, can play there. And so it's, that, that, that was built with money and proceeds from the city government working in conjunction with other jurisdictions. And I don't know how it got to that point, but someone built that. And, and so my fear is that I don't want that to ever happen. And certainly there were other elements that were constructed around that same time, uh, that didn't end up getting, you know, sort of any use. And there, so the two million dollars, you know, in, in my mind, uh, what I'm trying to figure out is how is it best for us, uh, between boards to figure out how best to prioritize those with the understanding of what we're trying to make sure is that we, we just are just really efficient with our dollars to upgrade, fix mistakes. And it's where everybody has, uh, an opportunity to provide that feedback. Because I think if we don't figure that part of it out, it could likely get to that point where there's frustration because there's not a lot of communication and maybe the parks board's looking at it one way and the council's looking at it sort of another way.
Could you be more specific? What, what you had in mind as far as what you think should be somewhere else? I mean, should the skate park be there? Should that be somewhere else?
No, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to say what, where anything should be. I'm saying that I have, I, I, I have fears with whoever's making the decisions. The number one, that's a fear is because there was, there are some things that are really wrongly built and that like is something you take personally when you spend money that way and it doesn't work out. Uh, and then also just a desire to make sure that we're collaborating really well as we, because the, the, the pool is limited as was mentioned, the pool of resources are, are limited. So.
I think if you want to keep the center of downtown Kyle here, you need to work on Greg Clark Park. Uh, i- if you want to move it to the northwest side, then we're gonna concentrate money there. I think it's kind of simple that way. Simplistic. In other words, that area is more favored to be built up. But with the apartment complex, it's multi-family housing. It's just ridiculous, gonna be ridiculous for traffic. So once again, um, Chuck will be looking for parking. So.
You mean like at La Verda and Hero's Memorial?
Yes.
What you're referring to?
Yes. I mean, it sounds nice to start from scratch and we'll do it right this time because we're starting from scratch, kind of. But I don't think that's. But I don't think that's the total answer, but.
No, I, I don't think it's council's desire to move that skate park up north.
No, I was just asking where you think it should be placed, if you think that's a good placement where we're proposing.
I definitely think that's where council has been, the conversations have been about. But, um, you know, I, I think for me, it's the ideas that you come out with, uh, when we're planning parks, trails, anything we're doing. This is what y'all have volunteered for, so your ideas are, are something that we really want to hear, you know, and, uh, well, we always agree with them, probably not, but, you know, but really I love the ideas. And I, and, and for me, it's like, it's something fresh because I run out of ideas. We're working on so many projects, I run out of ideas all the time because I'm brainstorming, I want to see some fresh ideas. So anytime you bring an idea, I promise you I'll listen to it and I'll take it to heart. I think the rest of the council is the same way, but we do want to hear your ideas, want to hear your suggestions, you know, when we're doing something in our parks. Because, uh, if not, why are you volunteering? I mean, it's, it's definitely want to hear your thoughts and your input, uh, it's really important to us.
Well, that's the way I had always understood our positions to be advisory, which we have no lack of opinion on the park board, so. We're glad to give you our opinion.
Definitely, we, we definitely want to hear it.
And those are your general duties as described in section 26 dash 21 in the charter. Uh, there's a paragraph outlining the duties of the parks board there. And so it, it by and large, uh, it's heavy in advisory and recommendation and different things like that. I guess, I guess I was just trying to understand what you were saying about the, the northwest side. Because those parks are already designed and, and being built, there's not going to be any additions, uh, to those. And I think that one of the things we've talked about as a council is, you know, that area is, you know, there's a TERS and that's what's financing those parks. But we really wanted to make sure that we did not, uh, forget about or neglect the other areas and the other parks throughout our city. And that's why we invested so heavily in this park downtown. And I think that's with the bond, it specifically called for improvements to Greg Clark Park, not at any other park. So, uh, we, we just want to be careful about that and make sure that, you know, what was proposed to the voters and what people are expecting, that, that is what's going to happen. There, you know, um, nothing will be added to La Verda and Heroes Memorial, those, those are all set. And, you know, I, I think you brought up an interesting thing. I don't know if you were, uh, kind of around when, um, Vista Park was, uh, being kicked around. And we've had plans for a recreation center for probably over a decade at least. Um, and, you know, I think there's a desire by probably all of us and certainly our community to have a co- a community recreation center. Um, the challenge is that it's just figuring the right year to call the question of the voters to, to build that. Because that's the, by and large, the way it's going to be financed. Um, you know, we, we may try to find grant funding and other different things like that to help get there. But, uh, it's most unlikely would be a call of, of a bond. And so, uh, and that's what stifled, uh, Vista, if I'm, uh, not speaking out of turn or incorrectly. That's, that's why that never came, never came to fruition. There were hundreds of thousands of dollars, I assume, putting those plans together and now they're sitting on a shelf. So it's really trying to figure out, you know, similar like we did with the public safety center and other things. Finding the way to get that all the way through, not just to plan status. Y'all probably heard us talking about the senior center as well, um, library expansion and different things. So those are all the challenges that we're trying to face. And I think this council has been mindful of not just trying to create plans, but trying to get it all the way to the finish line and that's through construction. And so that, that is just a challenge. But I think that, you know, as far as recommendations, and I've had a brief conversation with the mayor about this. It's interesting because you all have seen me come to your meetings. Uh, I've heard you all talk about various different things. I know Mr. Check's big thing is parking and everybody has their, their thing. You know, I have some pretty strong views about parking myself, coming from planning and zoning. I'm not a big fan of building parking because I think you get cars when you build parking. When you, uh, build things for people and you program it, you get people. For example, we had tons of people down here on December 1st and everybody complains about parking in our downtown. We didn't add additional parking, but you had a park full of people. And I think programming and it, activities are what bring people, they'll figure out the parking. Certainly, I'm not saying get rid of all parking, Chuck, I'm not saying that. Uh, but I just being mindful when you do that and certainly having coming, having come up through planning and attending it, uh, and continue to be a nerd about that, that part and going to these conferences. That's what they all talk about too, uh, and when it comes to that. So I, I appreciate that, those thoughts and that you all think even beyond the purview of what you all do with parks. I think that's really interesting, listening to y'all's discussion. The other thing that sometimes I'm, I'm torn about how I feel about when you all discuss, uh, the money. Because, uh, part of me just wants your, your recommendation regardless of thinking about the money. And that's our job to figure out the financing of it. Maybe it's this year, we can tackle that and maybe, you know, we, we, we can't, we have to push it off. So sometimes I'm like, I just want you all to give me what you all would think would be the best park and what that would look like and give that recommendation. But sometimes I'm like, well, I appreciate that they're thinking about the funding and different things like that because that's what we do and that's what we have to figure out. So, uh, I don't know if council has any feelings about that, but I do appreciate how in-depth you all get in your discussions and how nuanced you all get in it. So I just wanted to take a moment and, uh, share my gratitude for that.
I'd like to address just quickly, um, Mayor Mitchell's concern about doing it right. We're looking at a skate park. We spent a lot of time talking about what's right in a skate. None of us are experts in building a skate park, but, but it's important to do it right. And it's important to find a contractor that really knows what right is. Um, and it's important to build it to where the kids will come and the adults will come and use it. Um, I've seen some where they don't use it. It's not really a build it and they will come, it's a build it right and they will come. Uh, the same with improvements in Greg Clark Park. You know, if we do it right, it will make a big difference. If we just do it kind of, well, let's, let's get that done, I think it won't make as much difference. So we do try to, to take a lot of consideration about what it needs to look, to look like, how it needs to be built and how it needs to be maintained.
I'm glad you said that because I know there's a skate park nearby, almost like a skate park nearby and nobody's really using it. But then I go down to Corpus Christi and their skate park's amazing. They, they've incorporated bicycles and skateboards and, uh, rollerbladers as well. What they've done there is, is probably one of the most beautiful parks I've seen. And my wife is always on me about bring this to Kyle, bring this to Kyle. Well, we'll see, but you know, it's, it's something that if you bring something that can be multi-use and that everybody can enjoy it. And when you're talking about all ages, if you can go there any evening and there's all ages there. There was, there was a guy there, he had to be probably in his 60s and he's, he's up there and he's, he's skateboarding. It's, it's kind of neat, but it wa- it was an area that he could navigate, so it was kind of great. But yeah, it's, it's all ages and that's what I would encourage y'all to do is go out and look at different skate parks and, and bring back that opinion and, and think what you observed and what you think. And let's try to get our minds together and build something that's beautiful that's going to incorporate everybody in the city.
And not only does it need, does, does what we plan need to incorporate it, all those aspects, but we need to incorporate multi-use.
Yeah.
Um, a single use facility tends to not be used as much. So, you know, you're talking about bicycles and skateboards and roller skates for a skate park. And we were just, we had that meeting, that conversation when we were talking about the skate park. Well, where do the bicycles go? Are they all going to run into each other like San Marcos? They're just, they're all together, the, the kids get knocked off their bikes. And so we had that conversation about how you divide out the facility. We talked about shade, we talked about, um, how it was going to drain. So there's, those are issues we try to pay a lot of attention to.
Oh, yeah, and I, I remember that discussion you all had and I, I thought that was great, you all having it. Because I don't know what skate park you're going to that's nearby that's not being used because both the Buda and San Marcos one, every time I go by there, there's tons of kids. And, uh, I've gone and talked to them and told them about, you know, Kyle's bringing one and they have no shortage of ideas. And they will tell you, you know, exactly what you were talking about, Laura Lee, of keeping the different, uh, wheels away from each other. The bicyclists like their spots, the skaters like their spots, the skateboarders, you know, like their different things. And while there are some equipment that they can all do, you know, their tricks and stuff on, s- some of those riders have preferences. And so that just means the park's going to get bigger, right? Because you, you, you're going to have more things going on and, and different things like that. I know we've talked about a pump track and different things and I've pitched that to the kids when I've gone to the park. And they were like, yeah, pump tracks are great, but don't make it all a pump track. You know, have one section of a pump track, but we still want a traditional skate park and the, the half pike and the bowl and all these different things like that. So, um, I'm excited about it, I agree, you know, probably none of us are big, uh, skaters or users of skate parks. But there are people in our community that definitely do and they definitely don't have a shortage of opinions. And I think, uh, we would be doing our dis- self a diff service if we didn't try to incorporate some of that, uh, knowledge we have.
My grandson has plenty of feedback on skate.
I think, I think that's really important that we involve the people who are actually going to use it. You know, maybe, um, you know, maybe get a group of skaters together, go down there, see if that, if they'll come up here and spend an hour with us telling us what they want. I think that we also need to focus on the future, like, you know, the shade issue. Is our goal to have tree lined, um, trails or is our goal to have, you know, specific little units where, you know, wooden units with benches? I mean, what, what's our end goal? And maybe we do something temporary for the next couple of years while those trees grow and have something temporary that maybe doesn't cost as much as, you know, something with the reconstituted wood? That doesn't hold heat, you know? So, um, I think that we need to, um, really look long-term and see where we want to be, not just today, but 10 de- 10 years down the road. Because these activities also change. Tennis, when I was growing up, tennis was the thing, that's what you did, tennis and racquetball. Um, you know, and there still are people who participate in that, but I don't think that that sport is, um, quite as, you know, you know, in the list of the number of sports that are going around quite as high. So, um, you know, and we can't predict the future, but we can make it so that we can, or the next council, or the next parks team could take what we have or what we've built. And then, and modify it for the future and for whatever activities are going to be popular in the future.
All right, y'all, so we have about five more bullet points. Uh, we've already touched on recreation centers. Are there any other input that anyone else want to make in regards to the recreation center potentially? Um, the next bullet point was sportsplex. And admittedly, the park board, um, their knowledge of the sportsplex is probably that we're going to have a sportsplex. We haven't really been, um, involved in the conversation really as far as the sportsplex. I'm not sure if any council members wanted to touch on that at all, but it was on the list.
Well, that's kind of the reason I wanted to go back to Greg Clark Park. And I think maybe this where, um, Robert's c- uh, comments were sort of derived because, you know, that, that, we've built, we're currently under construction with three parks right now. And the parks board itself didn't really play a role in that because we started with funding and then we hired a contractor and we created these task forces and we built these parks. Right now, we now have, uh, uh, identified funding of, you know, roughly $20 million divided up amongst three projects. And they're, they're very different types of projects. But I thought even from the longest time ago that the parks board would be a, a good group to handle, uh, in particular, the Greg Clark Park project. Uh, but then, uh, also playing potentially, uh, a high role in the, you know, development of the, uh, trails on the east side. But the sportsplex right now is pretty much an economic development deal. We are still trying to negotiate with public, to create public-private partnerships to create a deal to make that happen. So I wouldn't think that the parks board itself at this point would have much to, to add to that. But I think that Greg Clark Park in particular could greatly use, uh, a, a, a group focused on all the issues. Because I haven't built a skate park either, I don't think any of us really had. I know that a $2 million budget makes me, that's tough because I'm not even sure if you can build a skate park for $2 million. You know, those are 20, those are, well, I'm glad to hear that, those are $20, $20 is all I know. And a lot has happened in the world of construction and we've had cost overruns and everything we've tried to build nearly. So, but now that we just have finally gotten those county dollars, uh, in particular for Greg Clark Park and for these trails, i- in my mind, time is of the essence. And we, it's time to make sure that we're moving forward. And so council's sort of knee jerk reaction would be to start pushing things forward. But, um, I think we have a great parks board and it would be great for the parks board to put time and effort into master planning it.
Happy to do it. Would like to do that.
All righty, then the next discussion point was regarding food trucks. We currently have permits where we can have food trucks in our parks. Um, probably have, maybe Amy may know better, but on an average about three that come and go throughout the year, mostly at Greg Clark Park. Um, there is a spot at the new Mary Kyle Hartson Park specifically made for food trucks. Um, so we're focusing, we're trying to get some more food trucks out at the park so that there's something going on, um, throughout the weekend, on the weekends. Were there any other comments that, um, anyone else wanted to make in regards to the food trucks? All righty, and then closing down Burleson Street. Um, at Santa's arrival, we closed down Burleson Street and we, at that time thought, okay, well, Burleson Street is going to really become like the event space for downtown. Because the park really just has sidewalks, it's more grass now. And so we can't really have people walking all over the grass. So moving forward, we wanted to continue to close down Burleson Street for our events that we have downtown, such as Market Days, such as the Halloween Street or Treat. Um, and I see that that's also an item of discussion, was there any other feedback regarding that?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think, uh, we've seen time and time again how successful that's been by closing down that street. If you go to Lockhart, they closed down their street, you go to San Marcos, they closed down the street for their market days. The only thing I'd like to see is market days probably a couple more times a month, because right now we're doing once a month. And I'd love to see at least twice a month just to see what the response from the public would be. But I definitely think that we could work to have a weekly market today in the future with the growth of that city's experience. And it's getting the right food trucks in there so people will have a reason to come in there, the right vendors in there as well. And I think the vendors, y'all have done a great job of bringing in, uh, a, a really different variety of vendors, so I think it's great. But I think that we're really missing out on the food, food truck venue there because we still have a hard time getting people in and out of places because our staff is short in some areas. And some, the lines wrap around buildings, so they're looking for other options, giving them that extra option on the weekend, I think, when families are in town. Because that's the one week, that's the two days of the week that you're not commuting to Austin Saturday and Sunday usually. So those people are usually here, so they're looking for options here in the area and they're having to go to Lockhart, down to San Marcos and different areas. But to give them those options here and even maybe a little food truck court somewhere where they can get several, uh, different options in one area.
I have a staff member behind me who has been on me about having a weekly market.
Yeah, I, I, I concur with the, the increase of the, I just, market days, programming, farmers markets, i- anything. Programming is huge and I loved when Mariana got on board and, uh, I remember early on when we were designing La Verda and, and other parks and stuff. All you heard out of Mariana was programming and, you know, what, what was going to happen there. And I love that because that is really a big part of recreation and, and parks. And so concur with, uh, any way that we can add, uh, more festivities and different things. One of my favorite places, uh, to go, um, do have those food truck areas, whether that's the picnic next to Zilker on Barton Springs or at Mueller. There's a food truck park right there, uh, at the Mueller, Park on, on Airport and 51st between there. And so, uh, and that just, it, that prolongs the time that people are there, you know, and enjoying those things when they have an opportunity to get food and drink and different things like that. So, um, big fan of that. Um, the other thing that, uh, you mentioned it, it gave me the idea, but I'm blanking on it now, so I'll come back to it. But, um, certainly I, I do like the idea of continuing to close down Burleson. That is a unique street and kind of area that we have that not, not a lot is going on. That is a unique street and kind of area that we have that not a lot is going on. Heck, I would also even venture to look at other kind of streets around downtown area. I know the one over here between Centerfield and us may be a possibility, or just some other areas. Because that also expands the park, like you were saying. And it keeps them off some of the grass and other equipment and different things like that. But I think.
Jerry mentioned that just the other day.
Oh, really?
When we were talking about doing both on the side of the gazebo and on Burleson. And always whenever we had an event, doing both those two streets.
Certainly. And then, oh, that's what it was. When we do the vendors, and this is just spitballing an idea here. I know we don't, we're not charging these vendors to make a profit. I know that's not what's happening. So I would like to see, and we talked a little bit about this at the Visionary Workshop, if there's a way that, you know, maybe we can get a discount for our local vendors. You know, if you're a vendor with a call address or something like that, that maybe you get a discounted rate on coming. And maybe that could be another way that we can kind of promote our local home businesses and those within our city. But certainly, I love that you all bring folks from Austin. And I've seen vendors come from San Antonio and different things. And I think that's really cool when I go and talk to the vendors. Because I love talking to the vendors that come to our event and asking them about, you know, how they're doing, how their business is going, how our community is treating them and different things like that. And we want to have those good relationships when those folks come to our town. And so I think that's important, too. But maybe if we can look at a way of sweetening the deal for our local vendors.
All right. And I'm going to switch these last two items around because I think one will take longer. But the next one is to build a wooden kids' park. That might have been brought up at your visionary retreat if someone wants to kind of expand on that.
Yeah, so if we look at what San Marcos has done with their park, it's a really big park. I'm going to go back to Corpus Christi. They've done the same thing as well next to their skate park. They've put this big old structure and it's the new wood that they're using. So it's all over that park. It's got covered shade areas over it. And it's, I mean, Corpus has done it right. There's people at that park from morning to night, the skate park, morning to night. I mean, there's not a time of the day that you go by there and there's not somebody there utilizing that park, whether it's the kids' park or the skate park. Whatever they're doing there, they've done it right. San Marcos is the same way. When you go to that wooden structure there, there's people there all day long. So I want to construct, I would love to see the city construct something that's going to bring people there all day long. So from early morning to evening. And we've seen that it happens because we have it here downtown now. That little place game now has people early mornings, sometimes midday, it's too hot, you want, or too cold. But in the evening, they're back there again. So I'd love to see something that's constructed that's going to bring people out all day long. And then I think that's really going to help us incorporate our food trucks and everything else around it, programming. You've got to start off with getting them there. And once you get them there, what's going to keep them there? So definitely.
Maybe the design could be something structured to our city in our past, like a train depot. Like something like that, using some of the history of Kyle and adding little features to where kids can play. And also including sensory play as well for those kids that have sensory issues with playgrounds, stuff like that. You can look into some of that nature.
An extra reminder, I was going to ask what the, how did the Valentine's Day used to the crew center? How did that come about? And what was yours? Because that was, that seemed pretty.
You know, it's a Valentine's dance?
Yes.
All right. So we told Amy and them, I was like, we need more programming just in general. We've been, now that we have Amy as a recreation manager, we need those park trails. I'm like, that's their task, like, we need programs, I need programs, programs, programs. And inclusive recreation is a passion of mine. It's also a passion of Amy's. And so she assigned Shane and Shane and she worked on the program. And if you kind of want to explain from there?
Can you hear me? So I have a lot of background with working with people with disabilities. So that was something that, when I was a programmer, that was one of the programs that I was going to bring in. But whenever I got the position, I kind of transferred that over to Shane. The area was great. It's very small. So it's hard to, you're working with a very unique population, so spacing is really important. But overall, that was a great way to start it off. We're going to be bringing a Halloween dance for people with disabilities. So that's the plan moving forward and bringing more of those types of programs into our department. But it was just an idea, looking around what we don't have and trying to incorporate those things within our department.
You made the front page, the Statesman.
Did it? That's awesome.
It was awesome. Yeah, you made, we made the front page of the awesome American Statesman. And there's a funnel in there, too, Kyle.
You had state representatives wanting to be a part of it. Who's that? Zaffarini that even reached out on our social media to be a part of it? That was a huge win. If we weren't in, at our Visionary Workshop, man, that was something, I think we probably all as a council were really a little.
Bummed about it.
Unhappy that we were missing that because that was such a great idea. And thank you all for doing that. That was a huge win.
I think spacing, though. I think our next thing is finding a bigger space to be able to meet the needs of the people that were there. Outdoors is always a great idea, but then we're dealing with the weather impacts of those things. So trying to find a larger area for the Halloween dance is what we're tasked with right now.
So I'm really glad we transitioned into this. And I definitely want to talk about it before we go back to trails or into Christmas decorations. So, and I appreciate Mr. Tobias bringing this up because I remember in my first summer on council, 2018, you're all familiar with our Youth Advisory Council kayak. Well, every year, they do a capstone project. And basically, they research something that they're, they decide that they're interested in and they research it and then come up with a plan. They're the ones that did the E-SIG change. And they pressed our state legislatures to get that changed. But in 2018, that summer, they came and pitched to us on inclusive play parks. And that year, we allocated funding to add equipment here and there, but we hadn't really built a new park since then until we came to La Verde. And Hero's Memorial and this downtown park. And so that is something that the council has been cognizant of on incorporating the inclusive play. And there's all kinds of different ways you can do inclusive play. Certainly, y'all have probably gone over on this playground. The ground is different there, so wheelchairs are able to roll on it. La Verde is going to have a huge playground that is all going to have so many different inclusive play features, from sensory things to physical things and all kinds of different things that they could do. So that would be the thing, and I'm glad it was brought up, is that as we go forward with our parks to making that a creed of what we do in every which way. I remember in 2018, when our Youth Advisory Council came to us, there was only one park, the Round Rock Park, that had it. They were building one in San Antonio, but they were telling us how they would interview people that were there and people would drive an hour and a half, two hours to bring their children to come and play at that park. And so that was in 2018. Now, San Antonio has one. I think there's an additional one in South Boston. And we're doing what we're doing here in our city as well. So I'd like to continue to put ourselves on the map when it comes to that going forward with inclusive play. Because I think that's something the council is definitely interested in. And as you all continue to get your hands in our parks, I would love to see that continue to be incorporated.
If the park you're talking about in San Antonio, we've been there many times, it's Morgan's Wonderland. So if you haven't looked into it, that is, should be a big inspiration for it. And you've been there before, correct? We've had Matthew's birthday party there many times.
Yeah.
And there's people that have driven from Houston. They actually drive in from as far as Oklahoma when we were there. They stay in San Antonio and they just stay at that park. And it has a water park now. So I don't know if it's still open now because of COVID, but if you look into that, Morgan's Wonderland, San Antonio, you could probably get some real good vision and inspiration from that.
Yes, it is currently open.
Thank you. And the other thing I was going to say, when we were in Frisco, we went to this place called Safety Land or something like Safety Town. It was incorporated with their city right next to their fire department. It was a really great place. But I was telling council, there's a place just like it in Round Rock, where it's a little town and basically they have the different buildings and like a grocery store, a bank, and different things. And it's just a little place. It's a small village. And it's kind of cool to see the kids going and different things. And they can learn things when they go into the buildings. There's an automobile shop and all this different types of stuff. And that, the one I'm talking about in Round Rock, it's right next to the inclusive play park there in Round Rock. And so I know we were all really thrilled to see what they did in Frisco, but I would say there's a local place not too far here that has a great example as well. And I'd love to see us kind of transition and do a unique Kyle thing as well like that.
All right. So our final discussion item, unless anyone else has anything to add afterwards, is the downtown Christmas decor. So I know we're given the presentation of possible proposed displays to both Parks Board, and I believe that was forwarded on to council. And every year, we talked about adding more displays. It has come to the point now where we got to get our displays purchased before the end of March. Parks Board has recommended what pieces they thought we should get. And so that was going to be the next proposal to City Council at upcoming meeting. And is there any other thoughts or discussion points that need to be made regarding Christmas?
Yeah, I'd love to see a gateway to our park. And one of the things council talked about was finding a way to incorporate the businesses up and down Center Street to bring that gateway in, to encourage them to decorate as well, whether that's either city-sponsored or if we do something to, like a prize or something for the best interest of business out there. Whoever decorates the best. But I think council was leaning towards maybe council doing it, I mean, the city doing it. I'm sorry, council, that's a lot of work for us. So anyway, sorry. But the city doing it, city-driven. But, you know, I'd love to see the creativity of the city as well and see if there's independent business owners there that would love to do something to incorporate and having a way to reward them at the end, like maybe the best business or something like that. So, but I know council was, their conversation was maybe the city pays for the decorations and does it with approval of the businesses as well. But I'm open to anything. I just want to see the gateway to our park lit up and beautiful. Something that's going to bring them in, that's going to invite you to the downtown part of this park with the beautiful lights that the city has done.
Any other input?
I just have one suggestion. Is that what ideas would you have for a new social media campaign for everything, for the parks? And for the activities, like doing video? Another thing that came to mind is when we were having our big celebration for the grand opening. I would have, I don't know if it happened or not, but I would love to have it live on the Channel 10 and just promote it that way. Because if the people are not able to arrive, because that was the, kind of the small little backlash that we got was like, people didn't, I didn't know this was happening. Why is downtowns closed? And then people are posting pictures and I didn't know about this. Why is this not live on TV? I would have loved to have been able to watch it. So ideas kind of maybe like that. And also videos, maybe promoting the parks themselves. Crazy idea I had was a new, 2022 Promote Healthy Living, which was brought up during, with a workshop, somebody came up with that campaign to just say, let's play. And then you can promote the park, you can promote the basketball court, the swimming pool, everything about Kyle that has to do with outdoors, whether it's the trails, whatever. Kind of something that of an idea going forward.
So one of the ways that we can do that, I'm working with one of the programmers now to start a family night out. And that would be to kick off the new school year. We would utilize all of our parks and of course utilize our comp team to help get the word out. But it's just a time for families to come out. We'll have the chips and the hot dogs. We'll kick off the school year along with our, and promote it through all of our events, like Family Skate Night and things like that. But that's a way for people to get to our parks that may not know about where our parks are at. So that's an idea that can coincide with our upcoming plans. But overall, the live, I think, would be great. That would be something I would talk with Samantha and Grant and Rachel about. But I think that's a great idea to see if we can get live on a channel. That, something like what we did for Veterans Since We Were Alive. And we did some promo for Veterans Day as well.
And just any of the new events that are coming up, we can just push it more on the TV channel, more on the Facebook, incorporate, you know, city staff, maybe some residents to interact in that kind of activity to where we can really push it and just like, get people excited, get people pumped up. Hey, this is coming up in about two weeks. You know, we want to see you out there. You can buy your tickets for this and that, the other. Or the swimming pool when it opens up again. Just those kind of things to get everybody enthused and promote, again, our city and how great it is and so forth.
Yes, sir, definitely. We can try to utilize that for our upcoming Easter extravaganza, which is on the 9th. So that'd be a great way to kind of start that. And I can get in contact with Samantha and the comm team to try to get those things going.
So Grant from the Communications Department has been awesome. He's got a lot of footage of our parks already. And last year, during Parks and Rec Month and during National Trails Day, he already has these little park commercials put together. He sent one to me when he found out that when Lake Kyle was going to be no fishing. So he already has a really cool park commercial for Cool Springs Park, like, go fishing at Cool Springs Park. And so we'll follow up with him and make sure that we start getting those out. He's ready to put the Cool Springs one out. I was like, wait a second, I don't think there's big fish there yet.
Okay, one of the things, I'm going to jump back to the Cool Springs. It's something that I've been bringing up for a while. And we originally had a video on Cool Springs. We had it taken down. The reason why is that the pond was full of algae. It was just horrible. As we're bringing in development throughout the city, please look at aerators. Don't just give into parking. I love parking, so I'm a fan of parking, so thank you. Don't just give into parking. Think about what's going to keep those areas looking vibrating fresh. Cool Springs, unfortunately, we didn't do, we didn't put any aerators in there. So there's a lot of algae in that pond, so you're not looking at a really nice, beautiful pond. So always remember, what can we do to those areas to keep them looking fresh as we're getting into construction, as we're looking at, you know, waivers? It's something we can negotiate. Yes, sir.
I haven't been there in the summer necessarily, Cool Springs. But I was there four or so weeks ago. There wasn't any algae, but those places are overgrown with aderilla.
Yeah.
I mean, fishing would be difficult.
Yeah.
I mean, it'd probably be challenging, but.
Yeah, when the master naturalist did the echo scan.
From Aderilla?
We, well, yeah, we made a recommendation on mitigation of some of the overgrowth in those ponds. And really, there are not many fish there. There are some fish there, but not many, and it's because of the water condition. You know, there's not enough oxygen. The weeds are filling it up. The algae has a bloom. So we really do need to look at improvements.
When I went by there, it was the algae had bloomed. I did notice the weeds in there and I just like top water, you know, fishing equipment is what I was thinking. It was, I would get stuck down on the bottom, but yeah, definitely.
Yeah, they're not the best for fishing right now.
Yeah, 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 definitely. So I'd really like to see us do more as we're allowing these projects to come forward. So always keep in mind, what can we do to keep these areas looking fresh and make it feasible to these citizens to come out and visit them? Especially because that's open to the public on a trail.
And we've got that new one up on Wendy Hill. And that's the, anyway, that's got an existing small lake. So I think holding them to good, high standards relating to the maintenance of that lake
Yeah, definitely.
is something we do need to do. Thanks.
And our other rec programmer, Austin Harrelson, has obtained quotes for aerators for Cool Springs, which is going to be another budget request.
Thank you. Thank you.
That is all the discussion items that we have on our list. Are there any other discussion items that council members or board members would like to bring up?
Can we go back to parks? I was not, I'm not very sharp tonight. I'm a little fiery, a little more fiery than normal, so I kind of missed the, oh, we're moving on from parks. Is that okay if we go back to trails a little faster?
Yeah, yeah, coming back.
A couple of things, so folks, my fellow board members, the last city council meeting, Councilmember Ellison invited me to come up and have a couple of comments when they approved the engineering for the Vibe. And I appreciate that again, and thank you, folks, for giving me a few minutes to speak. During the discussion tonight, there were a few sentences I wrote down that I thought were kind of important. I think a couple of you guys said our goal is everything that we do to be multi-use, right? And I think that's the vision I had around, around this hiking bike trail, the multi-use idea. There was a discussion between you and I, which I loved that exchange, by the way. And he was concerned about the idea of we had a single-track bike trail or runner. How do you handle when you pass each other? Well, same way you handle, how you handle people on a skate park. And you have bikes and you have skateboarders and people are cognizant of other people in that space and you do what you do because this is what you do. So I understand your concern. But when we had this discussion early on, the idea. So I understand your concern, but when we had this discussion early on, the, the idea of liability came up, and I'm like, liability, we're talking about a skate park, why are we talking about liability about riding a bicycle? But anyway, just an observation. But one thing, Mr. Sellers, we talked about, when I was walking around with Alan, looking at some of the trail ideas about going under 35 and under Philomena, right now the vibe is going to be concrete, end to end, right? So we're going to run concrete under those underpasses right now? Have y'all ever been to that little piece of concrete from Bunton to the vibe trail right now, or to the Plum Creek Trail right now? Have y'all ever seen that piece of concrete bridge? So they have Bunton Creek neighborhood, and you have the, the Plum Creek Trail, and there's a little tiny four-foot wide, you ever been there after a rain? How muddy it is, you know how bad that concrete's going to be? So your son, the Ziegelskow project, was great with that, that bridge, that's the kind of bridge you need under 35. If not, you know what's going to happen? You're going to have, talk about liability, every time someone takes a golf cart or a bicycle, they're going to, they're going to, they're going to go, you know, end up on their butt. So that really needs to be something that drains, because that river sill, every time Plum Creek comes up, how many times has Plum Creek been out of the, thanks this year, you think, Benny? Yeah, a lot, and it's really, it's just, it's mud, you can't even walk on the Plum Creek Trail after a rain, that's going to be horrible with concrete.
So, so, so metal bridge with expanded metal across, like you've seen in a lot of parks?
Yeah, like a-
So that road, like, expanded metal will probably be the way to go.
That's what it needs to be, I mean, every time it rains, there's going to be debris and stuff, but the mud just doesn't go away. Even that, I hate that little piece of concrete, I don't know whose idea that was, Benny, but I don't like that little concrete path across Bunton, because it gets wrecked.
That was a budget I was given, thank you.
So talking about-
He just called us out.
So talking about just recommendations from us, that's, that's something I observe a lot.
That's great, awesome.
Other parts of the country, like in Houston, where I have an office in Sugar Land, we have a, a trail pretty similar to the vibe, and it goes under underpasses, but it's really high, it doesn't go out of the banks like Plum Creek does, so I would just consider that whenever they come back with a proposal. So you kind of know my thought on the idea of a hiking bike construction. We're going to have a 12-foot wide vibe trail, freaking awesome, amazing, thank you, City Council, for approving the master trail plan and making that happen. There was a discussion about a 12-foot wide quote-unquote "natural surface" trail, and now I'm coming saying, I think we need a hiking bike trail of some kind. So if you take 12-foot plus a four-foot buffer, plus eight-plus, four-foot buffer, plus my hiking bike trail, we don't have that much north and south real estate to do any of these things, not all these things together. So the vibe trail is there, and that makes sense. The hiking bike concept is in my mind, I think that makes sense, I don't know how you're going to incorporate all three services. So if we're going to have a vibe, which is great, and we're going to do an eight-foot wide, that's great. I think that me and the interested parties that want this hiking bike trail, we're probably just going to step to the back and just let the eight-foot wide natural path take place, because I can't see where all three of these can coexist, and the limited amount of space that we have in the city on the east side.
I think they can, I definitely can, and we could, we could scale back, because we've got a vibe trail, we could scale back one of the other trails to incorporate the bikes as well. Because I sat back and I, I had a conversation with Mariana, and we were talking about it, because I was like, how's this going to work? And I think we can make it work, I think there's ways we can do it. The other thing is that some of those areas are really wide, so we can do even more in those areas. I know, coming back from Water Leaf, there's some areas that we've got quite a bit of land on both sides, and we've got several different areas that we've got trail, we're down at the bank, or we're up on top. So I think there's, there's going to be room to do a little bit of everything, and there's, everything's a compromise, nothing's set on stone. Just remember, great ideas come to fruition when people work together.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, and like I said, I'm not, I'm not being, I'm not being any kind of way saying, well, I'm not going to play because you're not playing against my rules. What I'm saying is I have a very, a very, a very interested group of people with the same idea, who live in this community, that really want this to go. And, and I, and I want to keep that excitement, I want to say, this is what we're going to do, guys, to make this happen. And, and every time that they've come to the city in the last 12 or 18 months, they've kind of gotten pushed to the side. So I've, I've kind of become their de facto voice, and their de facto vocalizer here, and, and I have to listen to them whine and complain, and I don't mind that, and that's why I'm in this position, I think. But I, I don't want them to get to the point where they, they don't want any part of it either, is what I'm saying, so. I don't know what the next step in, in this discussion is with me and this hiking bike trail incorporating with the vibe, or if we just need to let it organically happen over the next two or three years until everybody decides they're not going to do it anymore? I don't, I don't know the answer, and I guess this is a good time, Mr. Sellers.
Yeah, just a quick thought, so the east side trails are going to be constrained, and the Plum Creek is only so wide, and the amount of riparian areas is so much. There's a lot of land still left for a single-track trail, which I would love to see, but it's going to be probably a little more west, which gets us into more of the Hill Country area. Not sure when we'll get to that point in our development cycle, but, you know, we have, I'm not sure how many miles of trail, but a trail identified in the development agreement with Blank River Ranch properties, as well as with Nance Land, et cetera. So east side may be constrained, you know, very narrow, west side could be a little bit more open just from a, we haven't gotten there in development yet, and so now that this is a priority coming into future developments that haven't developed yet with more, more green space, more riparian areas, more drainage swells, things like that, I think we can add a lot more single-track into Kyle. So what I'm saying is, don't write us off yet, we'll, we'll have many more opportunities for you.
So right, so right now, I, I know there's 15 miles between 35 and the end of Water Leaf that I could, I could, I could cut in two months, I know that. I've been out there, and I can do 15 miles completely separate from the vibe, right now. And that's, and you're right, there's not a very constrained on the east side, but zigzagging, going through some HOAs and some other things, we can get 15 miles out for sure. What's the timeline to get the vibe from Water Leaf to 35? Is there a timeline right now? I know we haven't, not even designed yet, but y'all have in your mind, is that a 12-month, 18, 36-month project, any idea?
I'll, I'll jump back in there, so the city council just approved a preliminary engineering report with Sean Maripol. I'm going to guess that that process will take, you know, three to four months, it's not going to take too long, but then it's only a 30% PER, right? So that'll provide a cost estimate for the much larger process of, of designing the trail system, which could take 12, 18 months, just depending on, on design. Then the question is of funding, you know, we, we've identified some pretty good funding sources so far to build a trail. We will build portions of that pretty quickly, there's also portions that are developer-funded that are coming online pretty, pretty soon. So give it two to three years to see, hopefully, a continuous trail system from Cool Springs, you know, the golf courses there and the, and the ponds, down into Water Leaf, back up to 35, west of 35. I'd like to see, you know, a contiguous trail system, basically for six miles within the next three years.
Okay, so from 35 to Cool Springs in three years, period. So I'm supposed to tell all these people who want to do this in our wonderful city, just don't worry about it for at least three years?
No, sir, so luckily, the, the 30% design will give us where that vibe is going to be, and then, you know, once we have the locations identified, then, you know, we'll be able to parse out the space for the two additional trail types. So I would hope within this year, we'll have the, the alignments identified and the ability to say, go ahead, this is your alignment, start cutting the single track.
Got you, okay. I think that's all I had. Thanks for the answer, any questions?
I guess for me, it's, it doesn't look like you, you need a really wide path for the bikes, and when I'm out there driving that area, I mean, I, I see a lot of possibilities, I mean, there's, I definitely think there's room out there.
Like I said, I've got 15 miles on my mind now, knowing that we're going to have a vibe about where it's going to be, and knowing that the Plum Creek Trail is going to be, it exists and it needs to exist because it's awesome, so it's there. But, um, yeah, there's lots, there's lots out there, for sure, I just don't want to, I don't want to lose the interest of the interested parties, and I think that's what's going to happen.
Yeah, and I think, Mr. Miller, I, I appreciate you bringing this up and, and certainly giving us the perspective of, you know, those interested parties. I think Mr. Sellers does make a great point about understanding where the alignments are. And so if you've identified 15 miles, you're saying, of a single-lane trail for, for bikes, that you've, I know you've already been looking at the vibe, the alignments, you already know where the nature trail alignment is. So what can we do to, obviously, as you mentioned, we're going to be getting those alignments over the course of this year. Is there any way that we can incorporate Mr. Miller and as the liaison for those that, with the capability to build that single-lane trail, to be a part of these discussions throughout this year? So that way, when those alignments, because I really feel like that's, that's the key issue, is just figuring out where those are going to go, and then once we have that, then you all can be set loose and build your trail much quicker than that vibe will come along.
And at the end of the day, you know, we understand, this is a city project that's going to be engineered and developed. We understand that if we do something, and you come to me in six months and say, oh yeah, by the way, that's a cool spot you just spent that time on, that's where the vibe's going to go, we understand, right? Because we're, we're a volunteer group of people with an idea, and it just happens, that's just an organic thing. When you have a volunteer group building trails, like I've dealt with for years, that's just the way it happens. The South Austin Trail Network, I talk about them a lot, there's an awesome trail, it's probably two miles long, and they, they've worked on it a lot. Well, the Violet Crown Trail now has taken over that spot, and they knew it was going to happen, they knew that they were going to come and connect these two areas. So their feelings, well, their feelings are kind of hurt, but they knew it, just like us, if, if we develop some single-track trail, and the vibe has to move, and it's not where I thought it was, it's kind of no harm, no foul. We're not charging the city to do this construction and maintain this area, but we do want coordination, so we don't spend time doing things that we shouldn't, and we also, you know, I, I think back-and-forth communication and coordination is important, but at the end of the day, the city and the investment, that's the most important piece. But you also want to keep the people who are excited about being here in our community, doing things in our community, here, and not somewhere else. So that, that's, that's kind of my thought, but.
And just to answer, the, the question is, we've had Jimmy meet with Alan already, they've walked the trail together, and, you know, part of the process from the get-go, so we'll hope to continue that collaboration, especially after they fly it with the drone and LIDAR, and we can start parsing out the different areas, and you can be part of that process.
Cool. Anything else for me? Thank you all very much.
All righty, if there are no other discussion items, I believe that next week, adjourn the special meeting, and then I will adjourn the park board meeting.
Yeah, I just wanted to say real quick, certainly if there are any other thoughts or comments, I feel like the council's been dominating the conversation, but if y'all had anything else that you all would like for us to consider, or ideas, or, or ways that we can better incorporate this, what we've done tonight, hopefully you all felt this has been productive, and we want to continue to add on to these, these relationships that we're building. We met with our P&amp;Z board, we've got economic development on Wednesday. So we're just trying to maximize these and make sure we're getting the best out of it, and hopefully you all there as well.
And thank you very much for serving. I know it's a big task, and the meetings and so forth, and Jimmy, thank you very much for everything. So I just wanted to just acknowledge, thank you for meeting with us today, this is something that I had looked forward to as well, and, and thank you, Councilman Nelson, for putting it on an agenda item, to where we can finally start having these meetings with our Parks Board, and with our P&amp;Z boards and so forth, so, so thank you for your service, appreciate it.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we're adjourned.
So as far as the park board meeting, our next meeting is on Monday, March 28th, I believe, is that a Monday? All right, Monday, March 28th at 7:00 PM. And then if you guys make a motion to adjourn? No second? All in favor? I think we're adjourned at 9:03, thank you.